We'll go ahead and call the meeting of the Hillsborough Commission, City Commission, to order, we serve the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is the last meeting. Have you had a chance to look at those?
I'll make a motion.
Dave's motion is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Next item of business is the bills. Is there any questions? If not, do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Paul moves.
I just have one on the Rhonda Holzer City Water Control Box.
Jim, have you any idea?
I don't know what you're talking about. What is it?
It was under Sando Foming.
Okay, we had a faulty on our old equipment, had a faulty box, and the water heater went out.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the monthly disconnects.
Ashley, how are these handled actually?
What do you mean?
Do they shut the power off and they pay, or how does this work?
So everybody on this got late notices and they got a letter stating that they will be shut off, and there is a date in that letter. I don't have the letters with me, so I think it's like 10 days after they get the, after we send it out, or something.
Twenty-nine.
There we go. If, sorry, if it's not paid by November 29th, by 10:00 a.m., they will be shut off. Some of them, most of them come in and pay, some we do have to shut off, and then once, most of them, if they get shut off, they'll come in and pay, but then they have to pay the reconnect fee.
And this is if they're three months.
Three months behind.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to approve the disconnects?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dave. All those are, any other questions? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any questions for me? Motion carries. Next item of business is City Commissioners Reports. Start with Paul.
Okay, electrical, I don't have anything. Beautification, we didn't meet this month, but there probably won't be much beautification during the next few months. HEDC, we just came from a meeting there, they are working on some grants to help with demo, demo some properties in town, and also help with some business structure repairs that may be done, whether it be concrete work, windows, doors, they're looking at some grants that might help businesses with those, and also for, looking at grants for infrastructure repairs, if they have something that comes up on us suspectively, you know, a furnace quits, or water line breaks, or something like that, something more on that lines that they have on us to prepare, that they would have a grant available for those businesses to help deal with those, so. That's all I have. I don't know if you'll maybe mention it, on the economic development side too, we want to have a Grow Hillsborough event coming up, I look at all of that as being economic development, but I'll let Levi expand on that if he wants more.
Nicole?
I have nothing to speak of.
Dave?
Nothing that's on the schedule.
Mike?
So, planning and zoning met last week, and you asked us to look at time period on building permits that were not issued. We decided that $1,000 a day in our code book is too much, we wanted to change it to $100 a day, and then for the time period, we want to suggest that a 10-day time period, once the building permit is sent to them, then we can move ahead with the $100 a day. But we would need a resolution to change that.
We'd have to do a new ordinance revisal to change that. So we'd have to have two readings of it.
I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I'd almost look into it and see if I didn't change it already, so we could change it by resolution.
I think that's what the.
The language already might say, can I change my resolution? I changed a lot of the stuff to make it easier, so we don't have to use the ordinances, because a lot of it can just be changed by resolution. So I'd look into it to see, but if you want, I don't have it in front of me, so, but I can try.
Commissioner stocks on that?
This is for, if they don't have a permit?
If they don't get a permit, yeah.
I think it was a 10, what was it, 10-day? 10-day?
Well, if they don't get a permit, then usually send out a building permit to them, and they have 10 days to respond to that.
I think $1,000 extreme, I think $100. More reasonable.
And I don't know that it says, it says up to $1,000 per day of their, I think it says up to $1,000 per day, or does it?
If convicted.
Right, so it's not R. It would have to go to district court in order to be convicted, correct JR?
Correct.
It's not something we have to do tonight, but that's what we came up with, so.
I mean, yes, the $1,000 does seem a lot, but if it's going to court, does that, at that same point, is $100 going to be sufficient when you get that far? I mean, I would hope nobody, we'd never have to charge us $1,000.
No. But, and in that, if we send them out a building permit, we need to send this portion with it that says, after 10 days, this is what can happen, so.
So I did find the section here, it's for anyone referencing, it's 6.0801, and it says the City Commission, by resolution, makes to the schedule of late fees or penalties for building permits that are not timely filed, such late fees or penalties should not be constructed, providing an extension of time on the building permit. But in short, I already changed it, so by resolution, we can set late fees. And it's if they fail or violate the ordinance, so late fees we can tack on, so if they get a new permit, pay your late fees to get the permit finished, but the penalty section of $1,000 is if it goes to court, when we actually prosecute under this.
Right.
We can set a schedule of late fees, so.
So it'd be different if we want to put a penalty on, or a late fee, or, late fee instead of, thoughts? Do we want to, in that case, I think that would be fine.
So it's $100 a day until what point?
Until they would turn in the building, until the building permit would be.
So it just keeps on going, there's no end date to that, to, okay.
Where does, where does the $1,000, or where does, at what point does it start? After court, before?
Then the $1,000 would happen after we sent it to court, and then the court would determine the amount.
You're saying $100 starts after the 10-day?
Right, so whatever late fees.
Whether it goes to court or not.
Correct, it's just the city, it's just like when they pay for the building permit, they pay that fee to the city, you can also structure it in to have late payments, late penalties, wherever you want, so.
And they, the PNZ has recommended $100 per day?
Yep, yep. After 10 days.
After those first 10 days?
After we send them a permit, then the 10 days start, so.
Does that seem, not that we'd sign off on it tonight, but at least if we can move forward, that we can, JR, somebody can draft that, the late fee schedule up for Ashley, just so that we can have it finalized for tomorrow, or for, for the next meeting? So $100 per day, and then do we want to have a point where we say it's going to go to, we'll send it to court?
Is that it?
Up to you guys requesting, technically they're.
Would that be after 10 days then?
Well, I would assume the way that we'd set it up is, or by thinking, would be the first, building permit would go out for 10 days, if it's not turned in after that 10 days, then we'd have to send another notice out that says, you are accruing $100 per day until the building permit is turned in.
Is there anything there about when, is it up to our discretion then, when it's?
Completely your discretion.
And then I would say we'd give them another 10 days.
Definitely structure it with notice periods, but yes.
And then it goes to court.
And then after those 10 days, we can go to court, because that's, we're at least giving two notices then.
Sounds okay to me.
So two notices 10 days apart?
Do you have a $1,000 or five?
They would.
End up in court.
Yep. Does that sound reasonable?
Yep. I think it's out there, if the playbook has concerns, they'll have to come next meeting, or talk to one of us if they have concerns about it.
Right, exactly.
In a couple weeks.
Okay, we have one right now that we haven't got a permit back on, and so, do we wait till next meeting? If we're going to make a resolution on this?
I would say we can enforce it till then, so I would hope that those individuals that don't have one turned in would get it turned in ASAP. So that, at least before the December meeting, so that, because I would assume we put it in force at that date.
Correct.
Which is the, second?
Fifth.
Fifth.
Yeah, fifth.
But then we'd have to send them another letter before, give them another 10 days?
We've already given them one notice.
But they probably don't realize that there's fees involved here.
Wouldn't that be the notice?
Well, that didn't go with the notice. That would have to go, we'd have to send them out, if you don't get this done, it's going to cost you $100 a day after a certain date, so.
Or could we send it out now and be preemptive, and say by the next meeting, get this in, otherwise this will be the?
I would say that, let this serve as the 10-day notice, there already should be a notice, but I would send it down, then come the resolution, then it'll be passed, that anyone that's over 10 days with prior notice, and it just occur that day.
Sound good for everybody?
Yep.
Anything else, Mike?
A wooded property over by the city county shop. We agreed that we could change it if it's purchased, it's not purchased yet, so. And I talked to Pat about, you know, her concerns over there. If they did buy it, there may be, we may require a fence between them, and I told her that if you buy it, it can turn into a junkyard, so. But it's all pending upon the purchase, so, we agreed to change it from R2 to C1, but we don't want to act on that unless it's purchased, so.
Would it be a better option to say, we're going to do a conditional use permit?
You can't do that.
You can't?
The conditional uses listed are only for public buildings, so, whatever they intended is not a public building, they'll have to change the zoning to commercial, if that's what the use is intended.
So Mike, do they, do they plan to clean the swamp and the trees, and what is there, I mean, if they buy a lot, is there a lot, they can do whatever they want, I guess?
Yeah, well, they're going to put a building in there, so they have a lot of cutting and cleaning out to do, and, you know, I haven't gone any farther on it, but, you know, the recent drainage issues there, so.
Always.
That would have to be addressed, but there's water and sewer there, because they put, you know, water and sewer into it, so. But it's kind of, you've got to wait and see, so, but that's what's up right now.
And with that, can we put conditional uses on, then after the fact?
So we'll change the zoning of it, because right now it's R2, but whenever we change the zoning of, after it goes through the full zoning process, it has to be our current ordinances for allowing uses then. If it goes to a C1, which is our commercial, then it's basically any commercial property can go there, and there's, you have to kind of look at them to see what's built into each one, C, C1, C2, I know we have industrial as well, it depends on kind of what their idea is. If we wanted to limit it any more than that, we'd have to either amend the ordinance, or make something to agree with.
You want to weigh in anything on this? Not yet. Okay. No, I'll wait, because you're just kind of in the beginning here. This happens and that happens, right? Yeah, we're not going to change anything now, so.
My concern is, is that, what if we start getting more, I mean, we turn it to a commercial, and then it changes hands, and we get some other business in there that's going to affect the neighborhood, the neighbors, and different things, so.
And that's the danger of rezoning.
Right. It's also an unsightly property that.
Yeah. The only thing I would ask is, how big is that piece? Do you remember? It's a little over, it goes all the way up to those garages at the apartments. Yeah. And there's a cutout behind you, so, but there's 200 and some feet of frontage there on the county side. Well, there is? Yeah. Oh, okay.
So we could either rezonate, or put in a conditional use, change the ordinance, put in a conditional use that would allow a shop-type building with certain.
Right.
So there is some options. But yeah, I think it's all hinted on whether or not they're going to buy the property.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice to get it cleaned up, that's for sure.
And he did, the realtor did have somebody else looking at it, too, so.
Because it's R2 currently?
Yeah, R2, yeah.
R2 currently. Okay. Anything else, Mike?
I think at some time, we should probably talk to the sheriff's department about our heated storage back here, we could use it for some of our stuff, and see where they're at with that. We do have a tent and all that stuff that, it's in the city shop right now, but.
Okay. Steve, you want to talk sometime about that, when we talk about that back usage at some point, we don't have to do it right now. I'll set up a time.
It's a thought.
I'll set up a time with you to talk about it a little bit. Okay, anything else, Mike?
Done.
As Paul said, all of you are invited to the Grow Hillsborough tomorrow night, we're having music by the Gallagher's for a little while, and then Tammy Miller from, she is the COO of Governor Bergham's cabinet, she's going to talk about her roles that she's had over the years, she was a small-town Lakota girl, our Brockett girl, that became the CEO and president of NODAC, not NODAC.
Border States.
Border States Electric, and then moved into the role where she's at currently. That is at 6:30, all of you and anybody online, I encourage you to come, and we hope to have more of those types of things, if people enjoy those. They'll be right here. I think there'll be some light snacks, a few drinks, not water, coffee, that type of thing. Okay. The budget, we are getting a little bit closer, it is taking Ashley and I a lot to get this through, I keep asking for things, and she keeps working on it, so. I can tell you that just looking at things, we have a lot of, a lot of information that we need to look at and decide. Our electrical, I finally got that somewhat under, understanding and figured it out. Our estimate right now is that will be about $250,000 in expenditures over revenue this year, which will put us at about $100,000, and I think that's about what's in the account currently, it's about $100,000 left in that account. Next year, we may have to look at slight reading versus, I think the, with the new system we're getting in, that should help with our demand charges, I would, I would hope, right now, currently about 50% of our electrical rates are demand charges, so. On average, it looks like we're paying about 6 cents a kilowatt, and we're selling for 7 and 1/2 cents. And for commercial, and then residential's at 8.2 cents. So just keep that in mind as we move forward. We do have standard fees of 26.50 at the current time, but. Garbage also is another one that we have to look at. We are looking at about $60,000 right now deficit, and then our water is our other one that we are, water and sewer are our other big ones, so. We're getting closer, the next thing that we're working on is water, trying to get those figured out, and hopefully that will work soon, so we can get, I'm hoping to get this to you guys by the end of the year, so that we can start the new year with it, I'm still waiting also on Jim to give you some idea and plan, what they want to do for next year, as far as projects, so that we make sure, we try to get those in there as best we can, and budget where we can. Questions? We will get there, I promise.
Is this fiscal year, like January to December for this budget?
Yep. And this doesn't, I mean, when we look at this budget, it doesn't give you a true value of what's actually in the account, so. At the end of the month, I'll actually send out our actual revenue statement, so you can see what each item actually has in the account, because this is just this year's expenditures, not what we've had in the past. Okay. Questions on that, anything else on that, from you guys? Did we put that on special, or I was going to talk? This thing, you want to pull that up? I just emailed it to you. But I changed it, the one that I wanted to send you. So if we are good, the last thing I have is the, and I emailed it to all of you, is that calendar magnet that we had talked about a while back, to get done. I made a few changes based on the, what information I got back, I made sure to put the year on it, I realized I forgot that, and then put a key on it, so that you have a little bit better understanding of the dates.
Is recycling, I thought it was always the fourth Friday, is it, Tom?
It is the third full, full Friday.
Fourth, full Friday, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, it has to be a full week in order to count the first week, that's where it gets confusing. And I didn't put everything in, I did as best I could to try to keep it as. Question, Paul?
Well, just, you said the third full Friday, you said?
The Friday of the third full week, so like, for example.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, does that make sense? So like, the first was on a Tuesday, yeah, the first was on a Tuesday this month, and so that week doesn't count. So the first full week would have been the following.
For Monday, not Sunday.
Right.
So does, does this calendar go online, does it get mailed out?
Our thought was, so when we approved this a while back, it was to, number one, get that emergency number out, that way the sheriff's department isn't getting, dispatches isn't getting all those calls, hopefully that people would realize that there's an outage, that they would call that number to make sure that we, we know. And then secondly was to help with the recycling, but we had, the hope was to get that number out, was the biggest thing.
The tree, the yard and tree, that's to the west of city shop, right?
Yep.
We have south.
Okay, I will change that. And then the last thing was just for approval as to which way you would like to go with them. There's two bids in there, one is out of Fargo, and one is from the Banner.
Is that in your email?
It's in the packet first. So the Banner, Corey said it'll be about a dollar to $1.25 per magnet, and that was, I was figuring at $1,000, $1,000 of them, and they would be five by, five by eight, or they'd fit in those half-size vanilla that we sent out the surveys with, and we went also, Sir Speedy out of Fargo, they said it would be 5.16, 78 for $1,000, or about $555.
So this was, this was budgeted for this project, or?
We didn't.
We approved.
We had approved doing this, we had, because I said I could try to get it under a dollar a piece. Cause I said I could try to get it under a dollar a piece.
Besides the magnets, do these go anywhere? I'm just thinking of things like QR codes, cause I'm kind of a geek that way. Save it on my phone, like QR code it to someplace. If I lost the magnet or anything.
Well, I think we could put it on the website in different places, so. So if you'd like to proceed, just let me know, or take a motion which route you'd wanna go and how many for sure we wanna do. We have nine hundred?
About, yep.
And then I would assume we would mail these out for them. Besides having some here. So I don't know if you'd wanted more, so that we have some more here.
I don't know. Beans were budget constraining right now. Do you think we need this right now? Even though it's, whatever, five to a thousand bucks or whatever. I don't know. I just don't think we need to spend that money right now.
Like I said, it was a project that we had approved before, so I just wanted to make sure that we followed up on it.
That's my thought.
Anybody else?
How much is this project gonna cost?
With mailings, it would probably be about seven, seven fifty, if we want the lowest bid. Otherwise, it would be fifteen.
Fifteen hundred?
Correct.
Total?
Total.
Okay, I'm leaving. In the direction of Mike there, but fifteen hundred.
I would thought a letter sent out to every customer would, for now, do the same effect.
Well, the thought behind the magnet was that it would be there.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
I don't know. I think it gotta be adding for people to have that on their refrigerator. It's, I know it's money, but I'm just looking at, I know there's a lot of people are always wondering what recycling is. And that was the reason we brought up initially. But this is how much people use it, I guess. I know, I know if you sent out a letter, go into garbage the next day, what, go on my refrigerator? Or is a magnet might, so, well, magnet would, let's put it that way, so.
We'll do one last call. If you'd like to make a motion, otherwise we'll move on.
So what was the banner again?
Banner was, he said a dollar to a dollar and a quarter a piece.
I don't know. I'm, I'm more of a tech person. I don't, I don't use a magnet, so, sorry.
Okay, we'll move on. Jim, you're up.
Just one item. Sheriff Hunt and I met today and talked about a few parking story removal issues. I don't know, do you wanna talk about that now or when Steve gives his report? Or I see there's line item at the bottom between the trailers, so. That's all I have.
I think we can talk about it now. If Steve wants, that way he can get on if he wants to.
Isn't that the last item to tie into it?
We can move that in together if you'd like. So I know this has been brought up a few times. The biggest thing is how are we going to move forward on this? And that's, I'd ask both Jim and Steve to kinda come up with a plan of how we can make this attack and how, you know, how we're gonna move forward on this. I don't, our ordinance are, are there. It's just a matter of fact, however we gotta enforce it and who's gonna do it and that sort of thing and what are.
Steve brought up some good issues on the ordinance. We need to assume a look at that and get that taken care of before we can start over.
I sat down, I pulled up your ordinances online, read off what you had as far as parking. I think some of that might have been sent out to you today before you take a look at. First one I'm gonna direct you to is the nine point one four one zero. Stopping parking overnight in 24-hour limitations. Most of it's pretty clear, kind of basic. But I guess one of the things that I wanted to suggest is changing that 24 hours to a 48 hour. Couple of reasons. Number one, the tickets and what we use around the rest of the county is a 48 hour ticket. I believe that's what, I shouldn't go there, but that's the standard that we use around the county for the most part is 48 hours. Along with that, somebody parks their car and goes out of town for the weekend or whatever. Typically, that 48 hours is we give them time to get back and do what they have to do as far as get them moved. So if we do tag a vehicle, they've got that 48 hours to, to deal with it before their time expires. So I guess that was the first thing I would bring up to you and suggest to you. How this plays in with the trailer parking, I don't know. If you look at number one under that same section, it's talking about motor vehicles, including the not limited to cars, trucks, commercial vehicles, tractors, contractors, equipment, semi-trailers and transport motor vehicles. It doesn't mention trailers specifically in there. I would suggest that if that's an issue that, that you're concerned about, just looking at the rest of the agenda, it looks like that's maybe part of the issue, that I would include that. And maybe be so, so specific as to also include campers and boats. Cause that tends to be one of the issues that we see as well, if that's what the concern is.
I guess, I think that's a concern that, I added that to the agenda, cause that's a concern that I've been getting expressed to me as ice fish houses and campers just brought back to town from the summer and just left on the streets. That's what I've been hearing, so.
So, I mean, that's, that's the commission's decision, what you end up doing with that. But I think if, if that's the route you're gonna go, I think we need to be specific and spell that out in this, in this ordinance and be very specific about the language that you put in there regarding that. The next thing, number five under that same one, that's what we talked about before, where it lists the penalty. And in one spot, it says $10 written out and then print is behind it, it's got $20. So we just need to correct that.
What do you want it charged, or what other cities charge? Let me say it that way.
There's a range, so it's whatever you want to make it. We just need to know what it is and, you know, have it corrected in the ordinance if we're gonna write it.
Is there a standard number though that works? Ten, twenty, fifty?
Twenty to fifty, either or is good. I guess my, my opinion and my personal thought, not, not being the sheriff or whatever, but if I wanna live in Grand Forks in Fargo and it pay the higher prices, I live in Grand Forks in Fargo, so you know, $20 probably works. $20 isn't a lot, but if you keep getting tagged, tagged time and time again, eventually you're gonna get the message.
Gotcha.
And this is regarding just specific snow removal?
No, this is specific just to parking.
Just any time parking?
Anytime parking.
You're wrong. You're wrong.
So they get tickets if they park in the street more than 48 hours?
They could. My suggestion wouldn't be to go right to tickets. Usually a knock and talk, the tow tag on the car, that kinda stuff gets their attention and heads up, get them moved. Number three talks about a vehicle that has not moved at least 300 feet shall be considered to have remained stationary and parked. In the enforcing of the above parking limitations, I think that needs to be more specific as well. If I get in my car, drive up to Miller's and buy a gallon of milk and come back home, I moved 300 feet. I just parked it in the same spot again. So, you know, do you want that to say have moved? Or do you want to say park at least 300 feet away? How specific are you gonna get with this? And, you know, we, we pay attention when we're out there driving, but sometimes it's hard to tell whether somebody's got their car moved it or, you know, just parked in the same spot again. If I lived right here in town, I'd park in the same spot day after, day after, day after. So it's, it's up to what it is you're trying to accomplish here, what you want done.
Could it be your radio that's interfering?
I just shut it off, so.
Okay. Maybe not.
It's my magnetic personality.
I'm just thinking of like the uptown for those that live there. You know, like I have some contractors there, but, you know, they work at the plant, so of course they move every day. But I've noticed that they park in the same spot when they come back. But then they're not from here either, so they get their 10 days off and they do go on vacation to see their families. So I don't know how to resolute parking for them, considering that that's where they live. So that's, I guess, I think of things like, items like that around, cause it's getting congested in our areas already through the alleyway and stuff, so. I mean, if there's something where there's parking for them, they don't mind moving, but I just think of things like that. I don't know what they would do.
On Main Street, I believe, is different.
So there's exceptions in town?
But number one talks about Main Street.
They also have back here, that's an option, which is only not here. Come out the alley, they walk across the street, they could park back there also.
Yeah, they don't mind moving. They're really good to work with, but.
Cause that's a designated parking area back there, so.
Anything else? Steve on the lane?
That, that covers the general overall parking. If, if that helps you guys as far as what, what our thoughts are. And if you go to nine point one four one three, that's your snow removal, street clean ordinance. And from my point of view, this one's totally unworkable the way it's written. I don't know what, what you're gonna consider giving notice. I've never seen any signs most of those parts. We're gonna be cleaning these streets or we're gonna be doing this. And I don't know how big of a problem this is. Jim and I had that conversation and, and, you know, I think you give an overall, you know, tank constrained cars should be moved within 24 hours after a snowstorm to allow for street cleaning, something like that. And, and then you can get into semantics, well, when's 24 hours after the, after the storm? You know, when exactly is that? But that gives them a pretty good general idea. They need to move it when the snow quits flying to give this, the street cleaning. Excuse me. But as, as Jim and I talked, you know, for that first full 24 hours afterwards, they're busy as, as all get out, dealing with the snow removal and just getting the streets opened up. And my people are all busy pulling cars out of ditches and handling crashes and that kinda stuff. So neither one of us really have time to be out there tagging cars that didn't move for, for snow removal. If, if they can't go out and move their car, lay right by it, fill it in, it's, it's there till they dig it out, whatever the case is. But, you know, the next, you know, day after the storm, the next couple of days, three days, whatever, then we could go around and start tagging these vehicles and, and giving people the idea, hey, you need to get this moved so we can get out there and get the snow cleaned up in front of your place. If you want the snow cleaned, you gotta move your car. We talked about the tags that, that my office puts on these cars. And usually that gets a pretty good reaction. When we put a tag on a car, they'll get out there and get it moved fairly quickly. But we also talked about maybe making up some tags for the, for the city street guys that they can put on cars as well if they have an issue. Wouldn't be the exact same tags we do with some brightly orange colored, like, like we stick on there. It could be something to the effect of Hillsborough Public Works is asking you to move your cars so we can clean the snow in front of your property or whatever the case is. And that gives them the same idea. And then also, at the same time, without having to spend a lot of time out dealing with these cars, his guys can call us right from the equipment they're in, say, you know, just call dispatch and say, we put a tag on a car right here. Car, you know, needs to get moved so we can clean the snow. We'll keep a master list in our office and then when we're out the next couple of days after the storm, we can work on doing knock and talks with people, say, hey, we need you to move your car, get it out of the way. If that doesn't get the results, then you can work on, on towing cars. And, and that leads into the next topic. How aggressive do you wanna get with yanking cars and impounds and that kinda stuff? And that's, again, a question for this commission. What, what do you wanna see done? I'm sure we can get a company that can do it, probably not a local one, so we're probably looking at somebody out of Fargo to come up here to impound these cars. And then it's up to the people to, to get down there, get their car back out of impound, whatever it's gonna cost them to do it. And I guarantee it's not cheap. Without having the discussions with them, I don't know if there would be any kind of a feat towards the city. I, I would tend to believe probably not, if they can do more on the, the car owners to, to foot the bill for that. There's new, not brand new, but fairly new process for the tow truck drivers that, or the company owners, that they go get a car. People don't come and get it out of impound. They have a way to send notification to those owners and then after so much time, the vehicle becomes theirs. Suppose how they want, that's how they recruit their costs. It's up to, like I said, the commission to decide what you want and how aggressive you wanna get with this.
What big a problem is it, Jim? Cars parked for, usually they get moved or?
They usually get moved. There's some chronic ones, it's the same thing, you know, every year. And there's those that'll move it, let us clean, then they'll park them right back there. But you're constantly going around them. But I think we both, we've talked about how 90% of the people move them after they realize they, they need to get a move. It's always just a few out there that you gotta keep hammering on, so.
And what happens if they don't get moved? What kind of a mess do you got?
Well, we like to keep the gutters open. That's a big thing, you know. Once they don't move them, then they just keep getting packed and packed and processed and you got issues with drainage and at the end of the year, but. And then some of the streets in there, when you start getting a vehicle there with a big snow pile around it, you know, it's just. Majority of it, I think, we can add and keep up on. And people, if you let them know that, you mean, you can get that off of there, you know?
So a personal opinion, a knock without can go a long ways with, with most of the people?
I don't, I don't know of a big problem with it myself, but I do, I, I would like to have something in place for those that, that, hey, we need this move, you know, you better. To me, we have to have that one piece of the pie in that says, hey, at some point, you know, we have the legal right to get this vehicle towed. If it's getting to where there's enough snow out of where it's getting to block the street or, or our neighbors, they're parking in front of a neighbor's house, you know, and they want their parking back or something like that. I think, I think we need to have something in place for those instances now. If you wanna block the street in front of your house, you know, I guess it's not, it's not bothering the neighbor or somebody else. It's not a huge thing to me, but it might be for somebody else. But I think we still have to have something in place on JR's side there that says, that says, if we do have to pull the trigger and say, hey, we've knocked on the door here enough and you're, you're not even making attempt to move this and we need it moved. We have to have something in place for that, so.
Like I said, clearly, if, if we're putting our tags on them or the city's tagging them, we've got our master list in the office. We know the dates and the times when these vehicles were tagged. We've still got a 48 hour ordinance that we can fall back on, so, you know, we're good there. If we've got that chronic individual that's not doing it. And if you've got a, a snow pile around your car from two or three different snowfalls and you still haven't moved your car, it's pretty clear. So at that point, we can, we can definitely do that. And I think that's something that Jim and my office can work fairly closely on and say, hey, they're not getting it, we need to, we need to yank this one or whatever.
And maybe that's what we need is to pull a few of them and I think we'll get around it, you know?
Well, I think, I think putting tags on them after 48, whatever, at some point, you're gonna know this is enough is enough. Put a tag on them. At some point, you're going to know this is enough is enough, put a tag on them. Do the knock first, and if they want to do something about it, that's great. Otherwise, hey, tag it, and eventually it's going to get towed. And like Jim said, you know, they'll figure it out.
Like I said, for the snow removal in and of itself, I think if we give them that 24 hours after a snowfall to get it moved, and then after that 24 hours, we start tagging. And they still don't get it moved, then I think it's going to be very clear to both of us that it needs to go and we can deal with it. But like I said, it means trying to do the knock and talk, get it moved that way. But then when we have that chronic problem, then we just deal with it.
Could we, instead of saying 24 hours after a snowstorm, could you say 24 hours from the time that it's tagged? So that would serve as your notice? So if Jim put on a tag and it now has 24 hours to move it, that would be your notice on that vehicle?
I don't know if you even have to say the 24 hours. What I'm saying is probably going to be 24 hours before we get to the point where we got time to go around and start tagging them.
Right. No, but I'm saying it's whenever that tag puts on, the tag is put on, whether it's 24 hours, 48 hours, whatever, that is the notification and you have 24 hours from the time that that tag's put on.
Well, essentially, that's what the tag's saying.
Right. But if that was the ordinance instead of this, would that work better? Or would that fit?
I think so. I actually did look at some other cities, their samples. I've actually seen Fargo, or West Fargo, change their rule that you can, as the mayor, can declare a snow emergency and then everyone has to clear their cars just by his proclamation. Other cities have it that if there's three inches of snowfall, they have six hours to move their cars or they can be ticketed by and or towed. And they don't have to tag them either. It's just simple and it's, it is logical. I mean, there's pretty common sense, they should be off the streets for snow cleaning. But we can definitely put in whatever we want.
The only reason I say that is, is somebody going to say, well, when was the end of the snowfall? And now there's a second snowfall, so that's where if you have very clear cut...
For the ones that maybe are chronic, I mean, do you ever run into issues where it's, they haven't moved it just because it doesn't start or they have no one to move it? Like, I'm just thinking of...
Oh, that's definitely come up.
You know? You know, when you're in situations like that, you're still slapped.
Well, and that's, that's part of the issue too. I mean, and why do we say 48? Life, life happens, right? People, maybe they're sick for a couple of days and they can't go outside, whatever the case is. But you also have to have something in place to deal with it and something that's workable for all of us, so.
That's where the knocking on the door and trying that first, because now you know, okay, well, they're sick. They're not even around. They might be gone on vacation for a week. Well, if you didn't make arrangements and you're gone for a week, and it snows the day you're gone, well, if you didn't tell your neighbor or the city or somebody that you're going to be gone, or now they come back from your vacation, your car is towed, you didn't even, you know...
And I think in the winter time on vacation, they're pretty good about probably removing it from the street, wouldn't they?
You would think.
Because you know that it's probably going to snow on your own vacation anyway.
And if you have that policy and enforce it, people will know that. So they will prepare for leaving for a vacation. They'll say, well, we gotta get our car off the street. We need to put it someplace.
I think it's a lot about education. At least up front here, we gotta do some, you know, Facebook or whatever it might be, city website, you know, emphasizing what it is, and people get it. If they don't, they'll get their car towed, then they'll get it, so.
With this one, JR, do we, is this an ordinance change or is this a renovation?
This is an ordinance change. So I can come up and draft something, or I can work with Steve to see what's something that's workable and then present it at the next commission meeting.
Well, and I think most of it is, Steve talked about or covered is, so with those few changes that I'm sure you got...
Get a layup of those.
Does everybody agree that it should be changed to 48 hours on the overnight or the limitation?
Yes.
Okay. And then adding in camper's boats, et cetera?
Yeah. Campers is tough.
It's going to be very tough.
Well, I'll use myself as an example. If I'm going on a trip on the weekend, I might put my camp over to my house and plug it in on Wednesday so it cools down, and I might not be leaving until Friday. Well, that's...
But I think this is more snow removal.
But we're talking about the other one, though.
This isn't... You know, if you did get a ticket, you could call and say, it's just plain, I'm planning on leaving, you know?
Well, I'm just saying, it's just how strict you're going to get on it, you know, so.
It doesn't cost much to put a tag on it. But at least a phone call, you get, I'm guilty of it too. I park our camp on the street for 48 hours. We get a ton of phone calls after we tag some vehicles. We get a ton of calls about it.
Because you don't go until the weekend.
And that was my concern. That's why I put the trailers parked on streets for the snow removal. And I wasn't worried about so much in the summertime, you know? They come and go, you know, the campers come and go, so.
Okay. Does that sound... JR, you got for that?
I got it.
Okay, on the snow removal, what do we want the notice changed to? I believe it's the orange part that's highlighted that we would change. Is there a recommendation? 24 hours after snowfall, 24 hours after ticketed, after ordinance or after...
I would prefer to see 48 instead of 24, just because that's what our tags say.
48.
I think that's reasonable.
So 48 after that ticket would go on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Or after the event. After the ticket.
After the ticket, I think.
After the ticket.
Okay, yeah. That's workable for you, Jim?
Yeah. Anything else?
I mean, if I would take upstairs time for taking me home, perhaps by hitting the door, you know?
On time.
Okay. Anything else on those? Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Or do we want to add in that if there's a snow event, we can call a snow emergency by someone? So that send out a notification and that helps for that large snow event? Or do we want to leave it as this?
I don't know. You're going to send out a notification to everybody. You don't have any way to do that, do we?
Well, I think you send it out over our normal communication aspects and...
We have social media, we have website, we have the phone app.
I don't use the phone app, I don't use the website.
I'm thinking of that.
I can get the banner.
Are you thinking of the SMS, like, everyone gets...
Well, there's also radio and TV that can also be put out over. I'm just, there is other ways that we did this before.
Well, I mean, saying there's people out there that aren't going to get the message and they won't realize it, you know, because they're not following all that social media, so.
I think most people know if there's a storm coming.
No, but if you...
You prepare.
But if you do an emergency deal, is what I'm talking about. He says, okay, we need to get, you know, we need everything off the streets. Well, I might think it's just a snowstorm, not a big deal. I'll get it off in the morning and go.
We can do it the way we're talking about doing. I mean, we can get tags out there, whether it's a two-inch snow or it's a 20-inch snow, I guess, so.
I just want to make sure before we, I don't want to try to come back and revisit this again next year. I'd like to be done with this this year.
Couldn't we just do kind of like what we do with recycling? You guys may have sent out an notice, recycling day. Couldn't we just send out something that, hey, we're expecting a possible snowstorm. Maybe think about moving your vehicles, you know, just a nice little message on all this social media that we have, you know?
Okay. JR, we'll work on that for the next meeting.
Yep.
Please, and thank you.
Just the only question is highlighting for semi trucks in 2014, or what's that issue?
I think we're okay there. We just, in my office, had some questions about the trucks. And after reading through the ordinance, I think we've kind of got it figured. I think it's, I don't think it's a huge problem. Probably our biggest problem is trucks waiting to get in and dump over here. But, you know, it's a day-by-day, case-by-case basis. There's only a handful, and I think we'll do the same thing. My office will just reach out to those individuals that we know we're having an issue with and try to educate them that way. If that doesn't work, then we'll write to our...
No work for me. I like it.
Yep.
All right. Steve, did you have anything else for us tonight?
Last thing I got, just was going to introduce you to Tim B. Tim's our newest deputy. He onboarded about three weeks ago with us. And he's coming out of South Dakota. Worked down there for a number of years as an officer. So we're getting him up and going. Right after Thanksgiving, he goes out to Vismar. He's got to do the two-week criminal law, traffic law for North Dakota and then write our post-test. And then he'll hopefully be about ready to go on his own. So we're looking forward to be fully staffed again and enjoying the reprieve.
Welcome, you're welcome.
Glad to meet you.
Where's home? He's calling.
Isabel, we're living up in Air Force Base right now.
Oh, okay. And where's South Dakota home?
Isabel, we're about an hour and a half south of Vismar.
Hour and a half south of...
Yes.
Did you say Isabel?
Yes.
Does that ring back in? Is that yourself?
Yeah, from the south. I blew a tire on it. All right.
All right. JR, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Ashley?
Nothing.
I'm not going to break that 13-minute record. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's right. All right. Now, no new items on the BC as we move forward. Old business on River Road Park. We are still waiting for the lawyers with the NSF. The FEMA disaster relief, we'll kind of tie that under procurement or C and new business. That'll be the next thing. Oh, the dental and vision rates. We need to make a final determination on that. That has to be on our first. We had talked about it. We just need to approve or disapprove which we want to go with, the recommendations that we, that were made, or we can stay with the current policy that we have.
You had asked to table that. Was there any particular reason?
Um, just because I was over far away on the phone. But I personally just, I used to do insurance and I think it's well within, you know, advisement that, you know, new, not this year, but moving forward to, you know, have this stuff quoted with a few other companies too, because there are some more coming out, and they're very comparable. You know, and that would probably could give an opportunity to have more for less premium.
Right.
What time of the year should they do that?
You know, if their renewal is coming up in December, it's probably best to do it sometime in August of next year, but...
And I did look, at least on our health and search side, there was a brand-new program that came out last year, but they had closed the open enrollment period. And that is, schools and counties had formed their new groups, so we could look at that next year, but...
Yeah. That's why I wanted to table it.
It's kind of late at this point, but it's something that we need to...
I think, I think it's something that we need to put on the calendar and look at it for next year. Too late this year, but I think next year, look at different options. And I think if there's people out there that have something they like or are from community or whatever, you know, well, you know, that Ash will know and she can look into it, so.
Right, because our, just FYR premiums are about 22,700 for family.
You're talking about for insurance?
Insurance, all insurance. I think it's 22, 70 for family and 9,700 total for single policies, so.
But I'd have to double check. I don't know that off the top of my head.
So all them insurance...
You haven't been working on the budget enough, apparently.
I worked on it earlier.
Yeah, actually, all these insurance agents will call you tomorrow now because they saw this.
Probably. Thank you for that.
And we are through the state on our, our NPD person. Okay, so I do need a motion whether or not we want to stay with our current policy or go with the recommendations that were made for the, what was the name of them again? Blue...
Dental first?
Well, they were both called the same blue or something.
Blue dental preferred.
Yes, my question is, has anyone had any issues with the current policy? That they felt like they weren't being enough out of? I'm looking.
So the proposed was the... This one you didn't put a name on it.
Which one?
The vision would be blue vision premium, which would change our premium by $200 total. And the proposed on the dental was...
Blue dental.
Blue dental preferred, which would change, would drop our premium by almost a thousand. So it would be a wash overall.
To not that one, that was...
So you're looking at the dental preferred or the dental preferred plus?
For better coverage.
What you said, I would...
The, the blue one is the one that's exactly the same for less price. The orange one is enhancement for a little bit more.
And that's what the group, right, wants, the one, the enhanced plus, preferred plus?
Is for what?
The orange one is what you're looking at, wanting?
Yeah.
And that's about the same price as the, what are you doing now?
It's just a, it's like 30 cents more per person, per month.
The difference would be on...
The out-of-pocket.
Out-of-pocket is on...
And then the orthodontics, there's more...
Crowns repairs, inlays is 60% on the enhanced where it's 50 with the other.
Here's the current plan.
So the difference is on the enhanced, they would have to pay the same as we're paying now for out-of-pocket with the proposed, which it says the same as. They would have to pay, they get 2,000 or $500 more on orthodontics. So it's 1,500, 2,000 is the difference. The rest is the same.
Right.
So you're looking at blue vision premium and blue dental preferred plus enhanced. I'll make a motion to be on those plans.
For blue vision premium and...
And the enhanced, or blue dental preferred plus, right?
Okay.
Is that what it's called?
I'll second Paul's motion.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dave. Any other discussion? Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes for me. Motion carried. Mobile home utility rates is our next item of business. You will see in the package that I did send a letter to H Borough LLC. As far as I know, we have not heard anything back from them. I did send the letter, if you noticed, that we would decide tonight if they did not reach out to us, how would we, as a city, would proceed with this. We did, we decided last time we're not cutting off power, that was, not cutting off the water. And that was the agreement, or what I had also put in that letter.
We gotta move ahead.
Yep. So, I mean, our... They are both 12,000. And so our next item, next way, or we have several ways that we can move forward. One is not until next year would be to put it on the tax rolls, which would be our last option. I think we have to have that done by August, September.
Yeah, August.
August in order to do that.
How many times do we keep doing that?
Oh, three times and then it's not paid and then it becomes...
We don't want that. Did you say there's one or one way or...
I mean, there is other options that we can go forward. I mean, we can go through the liquidity procedures, we can go through collections. Collections, we're not going to get the full meltback out of it.
Where is it? JR, what do you recommend?
It's up to you guys. This was in the...
It's up to you guys, this was in the small claims amount, so you could work and pursue that by yourselves, turn it over to collections, again, I'm not sure what percentage they work at anymore, but those are the quicker routes and probably more direct. I would definitely send probably at least one more letter saying that we're looking at turning this over to collections, please pay now, 'cause he seems that we always have paid at the last minute for these items. The other option, as you said, is to wait until he goes onto the tax rolls next year, but that bill will get quite substantial, I would say, if we wait until that time.
Can we put in there that it has to be paid in full, instead of tantalizing us with payments?
Right, I mean, that's what it comes down to, is just let him know that we're gonna turn this over to collections, and that might spur him.
And that is what I did put in the letter, is that it needed to be paid in full to move forward and forget about all the things of the past, and let's move forward. The one point of information I did find out is that rates were raised there on the residents in August, September. That was done on their own before any of this.
Seems like he doesn't really give a damn about his residence, does he, down there? Kinda in a way?
You know, he goes to the point that he should be per meter be charged, but in the past, when he first bought it, there was no meter, and it was by the same way that we are charging currently, so...
You guys know the history more than I do, do you recommend collections?
I think, you know, an uphill battle, that's for sure. We send at least one more letter, what is our current rate on it? 'Cause we've never had anybody that's really went too far past the, do we charge interest on this? Or late fees, or...
I know when I first started here, Julie did send somebody to collections, but I'd have to, that only, she only did that once, and so I'm not...
No, I meant as far as what is our late, do we have a late fee?
Oh, yes, he does, and...
And percentage?
Pers, not in percentage, it, there's like a, I can't remember what the base fee is. Julie does the utility bills, I've never had to add the fee, but I can find out tomorrow.
I think that's another thing that we could set by resolution tonight to, you could, to move forward or push that a little bit, I'm trying to see...
He does get late fees, he has been getting the late fees, that's one thing he wants off of there.
Wants a lot, doesn't he?
I already told him no, so...
But it's costing us money when it sits out there, so, I mean, is it a policy that goes to this one, it goes to the others, that, I mean, we are at $28,000 in disconnects that have, bills that have not been paid, and that are late? Plus, there's other funds that are still behind that aren't on this list.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, we send it to collections, whatever that requires. I don't see why you need to give anything off, 'cause we're gonna, we're gonna be taking a hit probably on collections anyways.
Yeah, they do take a portion.
But you wanna definitely send a letter with that, with, send a letter saying that there will be, you know, maybe you might give them that week or whatever, and then it will be sent to collections, if that's all right?
Yep, that's exactly what I would do, is one demand letter, basically, if you don't respond in 10 days and pay, it's going to court.
I'll second it.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dave, is there any other discussion on that? So it'd be one final letter, and then it goes to collections. Any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And a yes for me, motion carried. Next item is special assessment committee, we're still looking. I did reach out to one of the new people that are out there, I haven't heard back if, whether or not, unless you have.
No, who reached out?
We both did, set the map. No one, it was to the other individual. It actually came in, came in the office when I was in, talking with Ashley.
But I asked.
You started, I finished.
Yeah, it was a team effort.
Get that on the record, please.
Yeah.
Do you wanna borrow my mic or...
I don't think it's his, 'cause he's still doing it, he's got the battery.
Is it up too high?
Not if he's doing most talk.
No, the battery, it kept shutting off, and the battery's dead.
I should've got that for you, sorry.
That's all right. All right, next item of business is the...
Special assessment.
We haven't had an agree, or, we're still waiting. Whether the mic picked it up or not, I'm sorry if it didn't get heard by you unofficially. It was a team effort. All right, uh, the Bat, is it Batted?
That's, yeah, that's...
I'm trying to pronounce the last name, I'm not...
Batted? Batted?
Batted, I apologize if I... Uh, the agreement with them, that would be, they're looking at insurance for...
About 196 per month.
I was trying to find the... That would be over 10 years. If so, do I have a motion to approve the premium there?
I'll make the motion approve.
Mike moves, or is there a second?
I'll second.
Paul seconds, any other discussion? Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And a yes for me. Do I go, next is the HBA Christmas carnival closure on December 11th, we just need a motion to approve that closure, I assume it is on Main Street.
I'll make the motion.
Dave makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Nicole, any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And a yes for me. Motion carried. Procurement policy...
Do we just, do we need to contact the businesses on that, Ashley, or...
I don't think we ever have.
Well, I'm just saying, should we, out of curiosity, letting them know?
I can.
Okay. I only got two businesses on there, so...
Yeah, I will.
The 11th, it's a Sunday, so, do you want a business that would be open?
Yeah, there's one, I guess, they open on Sunday.
And they should work with Jim to get the proper closure.
All right, procurement policy is the next one. We don't have one in place that we could find, so this was a draft that I stole from another city and made it fit to ours. And this is for the FEMA policy, for the FEMA disaster relief, but I would also hope that we would use this. For other means, it's pretty much the same that we had talked about, the biggest changes is, um, what's added into it is local purchases when feasible, consider all retails in the city to secure the costly, the least costly on both of those. And that's no items for amounts of thousands or less would need anything different. And that goes for if we're over budget, then the financial commissioner or the, um, can give next approval, per se, if we were hitting the budget line item, we can give another 10,000 to get through if needed. From 1,000 to 10,000, um, same thing that we had talked about, we need to have at least one quote by verbal phone, however. When we get to 10,000 to 50,000, that's when we ask for to get three vendors. And then, again, try to make sure we can use local contractors if possible. And you have to get approval from the commissioner in charge of that portfolio, or the financial commissioner, whoever holds those positions. Between 50 and 100,000, um, you can contact the financial commissioner or the commissioner in charge of the portfolio to get quotes, but there's no intentions that would move forward. We have to have at least three quotes, and everything would have to be approved by the full commissioner. And anything that's over 100,000 would have to be through bid-a-awordle, so we'd have to put it out on bids, this just kinda gives us a little bit more concrete, instead of us trying to decide. In the past, well, what were we gonna do here, what we're gonna do there? If that kinda makes sense.
Did we get copies of that, or...
It was in the packet.
In the packet.
In the packet. Do we, do we have to move on this thing tonight, or is tonight, or what is it?
I just need to get it to FEMA, um, we have six months, well, we have till, it's either January or February to get everything in, Mike, so you can look at it.
We can look at it till next meeting, but that's...
Yeah, I, I do, and I'm also curious on how, you know, some of the paperwork part goes, as far as, you know, tracking things, somewhat concerned about some of the bidding, if we have, you know, if we even have enough locally in some cases, even with some projects.
And it doesn't say that you have to bid.
Well, that's where I kinda wanna peruse it a little bit more, and how it would be implemented, how that would work, you know, what's Jim's responsibilities, what's our, us commissioners, what's our responsibility, you know, exactly if, if something comes up, what are we supposed to, you know, it kinda says here, but what exactly are we supposed to do, you know, is, is a text adequate enough, is that gonna be what we want, or do we want some kind of a formal written, you know?
Well, I think...
Just at first, what I'm trying to wrap my head around exactly, how it's gonna be implemented.
The first item is, you know, whether it's Ashley or Jim or whoever, getting the approval from the commissioner if it's at that level, but then that commissioner would have to let Ashley or Julie know that this item is approved or not approved, and I believe that was in there. So... Sure, I don't know why it's...
Would it make more sense if the, like, email or text or whatever included Ashley in on that conversation? Rather than...
But if it's not an email, that's where it's, you know, if it's...
Yeah.
You, somebody calls and says, we have this issue, and it all depends, because some of it's notification, some of it's not, we're trying to make this work to, so that there is a little bit, this, part of this, is why we need this. If you look at our audit from 2019, there isn't a checks and balances, and that's, it's a fraud thing that we really need to get into play.
We always get done for it.
So this is one of the things to help with that, that part of it.
Well, I guess what they would, next be?
Yep, we'll put it back, we'll bring it back up, but I would like to have this in place by the first year at the latest. Okay. Next item of business is the pickup purchase that was temporarily put, or was put in the budget, but it is over the 10,000 from what we had put into budget.
30,000.
What's that?
30,000.
30,000 overs?
No, it's 10,000.
10,000.
10,000 over, yep, yep.
What's, what is it replacing, what other, what is it replacing?
It's replaced in a 2003.
Don't go too fast.
And I don't, I just, it just, we threw out that we'd kinda gone that wrong to get new pickups on state bids, and so I, it just, I have no control over the numbers, that's where, that's what vehicles cost now, so, that's why I, that's how you guys know, so...
Well, the pickups that we got now, what are the years of them?
We have two newer vehicles that we bought on state bids.
What years are they?
You know, Chuck, I don't, I don't have the list of them, I could guess we got a 2020, we have a 2018, we have a 2014, and the rest are all, I'm guessing, similar to that 2003, they're in the early 2000s. We bought used vehicles for many years in a row until these last bid ones that we bought. Even the one I, even the one I drive, 2014, was bought used.
How many pickups do we, totally have?
We have probably five.
Is it five?
Five pickups, we have two flat beds.
That's those 350s or whatever they were?
We have a big one, then we have, yeah, then we have a three-quarter ton that, we've had that one for years, that's probably similar years, it's still in good shape, we have, we put a flat bed on that. So it would be five, I'm counting on, five regular pickups.
Thank you.
Yep.
My recommendation at this time is that we hold off until I tell Ashley and I can get this all figured out. Where we're at?
I'm good with that.
In the situation, I agree.
Yeah, I, I think going forward, that we should, you think, get the finance side of it straightened out, till we, so we really know where we're at, and then come back and revisit it again, and, yeah, I know it may go up, but I'd rather make sure we know where we're at financially before we say yes.
When it comes to the, these types of things, do you just request them when it needs a new, like a replacement, a new one, or is there a rotation schedule on these things?
We've really never had a rotation, it's when they fall apart, we look at a different vehicle, or, and we've had a staff.
Has it costed more money in maintenance by holding on to the old ones longer?
Yes, I feel so, and that's, that's the point where it, with that pickup is, we could probably put, yeah, we could put $5,800 into a 20-year-old pickup, I don't care, as long as we, if we need to keep it going, we'll do that, but...
Well, that pickup was here when you first started as road foreman.
We bought that new when I was, in 2003, I think we paid $17,000 for it. I mean, you can't hardly buy it, so, we think we got our money's worth, it's just replacing it, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, it's, it's, uh, done the, done the job for us, but...
I just, I just, we, we do have a lot of vehicles, but I've always liked the policy that if I need to send five guys, five different directions, instead of having two of them ride together, and it's not necessary, I feel I can get, we can get more work done, so...
Although you do have a lot of times two of them are riding together right in the road.
Yeah.
Especially in the summertime.
Yeah.
I see it.
And then we have, we also have the summer help that they occupy our vehicle a lot, of course, in the wintertime, the pickups sit a lot, but, you know...
What is the policy, everybody at noon hour takes a pickup, city pickup, and then goes to lunch? goes to lunch?
They have that option, yes.
Everybody does though, don't they?
No. No, I have one that, that eats at the shop.
Oh, okay.
He doesn't, he's in the country, he doesn't drive home, but.
Because you know, for a while here, there was people taking their kids to school in city pickups.
Yeah, myself included, yeah.
You're what I'm thinking about, but anyway, that's a liability to the city, I, I don't understand how the city can run something that damn loose. What would happen, and it never did happen, thank God for Jim and the boy and, and anybody else in the city, but what would happen in a major accident? Who's gonna wind up paying for somebody that gets hurt?
Can I ask you a question, Chuck?
Go ahead.
So if you were stranded, uh, on the other side of town, and I stopped to pick you up and give you a ride home, because it was ten degrees below zero, should I just drive by and say, sorry, I can't let you ride in my pickup?
That's fine with me.
Is that, is that any different?
I don't expect the city to be a taxi.
No, we're not.
But you don't miss my point of what I said, in case of an accident, and I'm only in case of an accident, I don't care how many times you go out and burger king with them, or wherever, in case of an accident, the city's got a hundred million liability. Or is there a write-off where the individual that's working for the city is personally liable for the use when he's using that pickup? I got to use a company vehicle for fourteen years, when I had to sign off on a slip of paper, any accident I was involved in, my insurance company had to take care of it.
We can look into that, I'm not sure on that.
Somebody better check into it, there's my building here, guys, I don't know what they could have done.
And what does the insurance policy say it covers?
I don't know, we didn't, we have to look at that also.
I think it was, we looked at, uh, there was an individual that was using city equipment too, some time ago, and we were concerned that he wasn't on the city payroll, and he was using, and I think John checked into it, and there wasn't really a problem with it, but.
I'll look into it again, and make sure.
Well, then you know.
For whether we need it.
Worth looking into, Chuck.
JR and I will look into it, and I'll find out for sure.
You might have checked on volunteer help too, I mean, are they not allowed in, in other vehicles, so.
Yep.
Maybe they're doing something that isn't, not being paid for, so they're not on the payroll, so.
I believe volunteers, we had looked into last year.
I thought they were covered.
They were covered, because we were talking about that when we had an individual that was blowing snow.
Right.
We know for sure that was covered. So we'll hold off on the pickup for now. Hopefully after the first year of the end of the month, we should have better.
Right now, I wonder how long, or even if you did even order it, I wonder how long you'd take to get it anyway.
Well, that's, we missed the state bid, because I think they had a window of, I'm not sure if the window was, but they ran out of vehicles immediately, and that's where they went to this education policy, and she said, we need to have those in right away, or we won't be, we, we won't be able to get you a pickup, so.
Yeah, because I know, uh.
You just keep that in mind in the future, and it isn't just pickups, I think you're gonna find that out, it's a lot of things that you're.
Right. And that's, you know, one of the things that we talked about when we, when I put it out at the, when I took over, is that, that's one of the things that I want us to figure out, is that procurement policies, or not procurement, timelines and different things.
Discycling things out.
Right. The one thing I asked Ashley to check with, I haven't, and I was gonna bring this up, and I totally forgot about it, I, I don't know if she's asked her not, but one of the things that we don't have is an inventory list, and we get dinged on that every time.
I haven't talked to her about that yet.
But I would like approval to have, um, our part-time person help get that list completed, if possible, and that, if that means going around and checking off equipment and getting them put in, that's one thing that we have to work on. I looked at our insurance list, and we have, and we're insuring things that we don't have anymore, so we need to get through that. I would love to spend time and get it done, but I don't have enough time in the day to get those things done.
Well, at the colony, when they do an inventory of their equipment, they, the auditor would send down to each department head, like I ran the sign shop, so everything they had to do at the sign shop, I was the inventory then, everybody inventoried the vehicles, culverts, it all got inventoried by, you know, the employees, and then everything was just turned back into the, to the auditors.
Right, and that's what we do at the school, but it's a yearly thing, but we haven't done that, so this is a brand-new, it's gonna take a lot of work to get this put together, that's, I'm asking for some help to do that, if that is something that you guys would be willing to do, like I said, I'd have to find out if she's interested in doing that or not. Some of it is there, some of it is not, and so that's where it's gonna take a while. The other thing that I've asked Jim to try to help us get figured out is, you know, what are those big projects that we need to plan for in the next year or two, so that we can put those into the budget as we move forward? Because I hope to have a clear picture of, this is what we're saving, and Ashley and I have had talks about, you know, we should know where we're at at all times, and all of us should know where we're at. So we don't have to make a decision on that portion either tonight, but I want to throw it out there for you, that those are the things that I'm looking at to try to get this, this all figured out and planned, so that we can move forward. Because it's kind of disheartening every time I look at the budget.
I think on the inventory side, that we need to get that, this would be a good time to do it too, because you're gonna have down days, on this twenty blowout, and nothing's, that you gotta go out, that'd be a good time to start, you know, have, have maybe the part-time that's there now, get a list of what we have now, and get that to Jim, and he can get it, because it's good for his guys and himself to know what's gone, and what's, you know, hey, whatever happened to this piece, and, you know, and now, because they're busy in the summertime, you know, in the wintertime is, you're probably gonna have a little more downtime, and I think that's something that's pretty important to have, you know, inventory, what, what you got there.
Well, and even when we look at it, the fire department's on here, so we have to make sure we get that, I don't, and Dave, you would know for sure, but I'm guessing a fifty-foot, one and a half inch hose is probably not a hundred and ninety bucks anymore.
No.
So, I mean, even replacement costs are not where they need to be, and that's where we have to get a lot of things figured out.
And if he's, they can get, if he can get a list, maybe that's something she can look at, some of the replacement costs.
Who comes up with the replacement costs?
That's what I'm saying, that's something maybe she could, maybe some things.
Right.
I mean, it's one thing the inventory, but it's another thing to go and figure out what, all this, you know.
But if we don't get that list first, and then maybe she can, maybe there's some things.
Does the insurance company, do they figure out, well, okay, this item, this is what that is worth, I don't know.
Well, it is, but it isn't.
They just insure it for their insurance.
And they have a depreciation charge.
Right.
Right. But I think inventory is very important.
It is something we get docked on for every.
If you're insuring things you don't have, and there's things you probably have that may not be insured, um, but it'll align everything, but I think it's good for.
What are you gonna inventory, how bad?
For maintenance issues.
Vehicles, equipment.
You're doing it, yeah, it has to be everything.
Your inventory right now is my other.
Bigger.
Not that job, the other.
Tools.
Whatever you, whatever you get dinged for.
For a while there, we're, how we were doing, anything over a hundred dollars that we were using was inventory, but I think they, I think they changed that, because it just, it got to be so much, you know?
You know, nuts and bolts and those type of things are not.
Right.
Toolset or this, um, you know, whether we have a fifteen-half inch impact wrenches, I mean, that's, I mean, we have to get pretty realistic, part of that, when I went up to Legos Cities, is, is our contents and buildings adequately insured, and that's the other thing that we have to look at, because, I mean, heaven forbid, if anything happened, we would be out a lot, and some of this inventory has to be, I mean, these days, we almost have to put a transformer on it if it's six thousand dollars or wherever it is for a new transformer. So we have to keep those things in mind too.
It's a lot of work, but it, you, you, it's easy, it's a lot easier now, because you can take your phone, you just take a picture of everything too, and then you have, that's just extra, it's just an extra deal, because now you got a picture of it, and, and when it comes to insurance time, it makes life a lot easier. I had, I had some guns sold many years ago, I had pictures of the guns and serial numbers and everything, made life a lot easier for the sheriff's department, the same way here, if you got something stolen, you got a picture of it, you know, it just takes all the discussion out of it right now, because they already know what they're looking for, uh, you know what you got, the insurance company, if you got a picture of it and a number or serial number, whatever it is, the insurance company, they're not gonna, they're not gonna question it, because you already have it, and yes, it's a lot of work, but, but you do it, and if you keep up on it, like me, I did it for everything, and now everything I get, whenever I, I'm not at the size of the city, obviously, but whenever you get something new, you automatically put it on the list, so it's already on your inventory list, once it's done, then it's just a matter of keeping up, whenever you get that new item, putting it down, being, and you gotta be diligent to do it, otherwise you end up being in this situation where you're doing.
Right.
Everything all at one time, and then that's overwhelming.
Right, and that's where I'm asked, you know, the thing about this is to get a little bit of help to get this stuff done, so, it's gonna take some time, but we will get there.
I might have some time. Dave, you wanna help me?
A lot of inventory.
Self-almation there.
You got two good volunteers, heck, you'll be done in a day.
Coffee and donuts, is that to pay? Pizza?
Where do we charge those at?
Is there anything else? Do we have any other things from commissioners, any of you, anybody in the audience would like to address the commission? Chuck?
I have a thank you.
Okay.
You too.
You too.
All right, if nothing else, do I have a motion adjourned?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Mike, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.